Good evening. This is the February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Newbury Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
George Morris?
Yes.
Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
And town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
And Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Town Planner?
Yes.
And for anticipated speakers and presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. John Paulson? Atlantic Engineering and Survey? I hear he is. Okay. Rob Rosine, Waterstone Engineering?
Yes.
Steve Sawyer, DCI?
Don't see Steve yet.
With us?
Not yet.
Mark DiPiero, I think I saw you here.
Yeah, Mark, you're muted, but you're here. We know you're here.
Michael DeSantos, Crane Properties?
Yes.
And Bill Henney?
Present. I'm here on behalf of Crane Properties.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Bill. So the February, this February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter one oh seven of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two, which extends the governor's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, until March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID number eight three two seven one four nine, seven one four one, excuse me, three zero five six, or by calling one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine U S, New York, and entering the meeting ID number one prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through the local access cable channel nine on Zoom and at www.tncTV.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and, if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. Some ground rules. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, as Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or your phone star six to toggle mute or unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. For public comment, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant, participant, or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand columns and again afford the participant, applicant, or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittable of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record, and again, the participant, applicant, or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So that, that being done, let's, we can go on to the agenda. In the first item on the agenda, under appearances and submissions, is John Paulson, PLS Atlantic Engineering and Survey Consultant, submission of an A and R plan for Division of Seventeen Main Street Assessors Map R nineteen lot fifty-three into four lots. The owner applicant is Rome Realty LLC, Robert Oak Cormier, Manager. So who's going to make the presentation? That'd be Mr. Paulson?
That's correct.
Why don't you go ahead? You have the floor, sir.
Okay, I don't know if it's going to be easier to share my screen or not. I have multiple screens that are associated with my computer, so sometimes it doesn't wanna, wanna work.
I do have it if you prefer that I, I share it.
Well, let's see if this calls up.
There you go.
So you're seeing it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So this was a piece of property that was bought by Rome Realty, Robert Cormier. And it was part of a an estate. The existing house is number seventeen. It is on a septic system, which is in failure, but testing has been done and right around where below lot, lot two here, there's a system that's been designed by Atlantic and it's in at the Board of Health now. The property is on Town Water. And that's about it for that lot. It, it's a three-bedroom house. It has forty thousand square feet. Lot one has soil testing done. It's up towards this part of the property here. And it's forty thousand plus square foot lot. It has required frontage. Hundred and twenty-six feet of frontage and I moved these lot lines come around trying to maximize the usable area in the area that might want to be used for our house. There's some slopes on the lot, nothing severe. But there are slopes on the lot, so we're just trying to make the lot lines work for those slopes. I showed one of the requests for first edit on the plan was to show the areas of the parcels out here that were above fifteen percent and possibly not all of the back area is, but pretty much this line that follows here, a good part of that upper area is, is steeper uphill than fifteen percent. And the rest of it down here has, has grades, but again, the switching over to lot three, lot three has sixty-three thousand square feet, lot four has sixty thousand square feet, for the possibility of, of two family. There was area to do it. The main part of the lot, so if you follow my hand here, the main part of this lot and the main part from here and out for both lot three and four are both in excess of forty thousand square feet. Both the lots have the required frontage. I had a botanist walk the whole site, the whole piece of property, and there are no wetlands on the site. There are some wetlands to the south off the property, probably fifty to seventy-five feet. And you can see where I put the proposed driveway coming in here. I'm well away from anything that could be considered a, a wetland resource area and not that we would flag it offsite because it's offsite. But there is nothing on our piece of property. The only thing that has any low-lying area down and where the hands going across back and forth. The soil testing that was purchased along with the property for lots three and four are in this area in here. And so because of that, and because the current owner wanted to take and try to maintain sixty thousand, he's not even sure what he's going to do with these lots three and four yet, whether they're going to be single-family or duplex, but where there was the area to support it, he wanted to take and make the lot meet the sixty thousand square foot requirement. And so that's why the, the it comes around. We have to go to this area in here for soil testing. The main septic field is going to be down in here. But to get to sixty thousand, we came over in the back here. So where these lots are configured, that's for that purpose, and the reason that the lot lines are a little bit angled in and out is because I wanted to maintain a good area in here for a, a very good building site that was pretty level and that could, you know, have good setbacks and good privacy from the other lots. The same thing in here. This lot four could be built on down here, or I maintained enough so that I could have them build on it back in here if they wanted to. As surveyors, you know, we don't mind angles and lot lines because the owners never really see them when they're not much near their house. So I have notes in here. One of the questions was about the bearing system. I had labeled it as mass coordinate system. We do most of our survey work now where we can by GPS and all the monuments that are located on the property, our field locations of monuments, the drill holes and, and that type of thing. And those were all done by GPS. And so the bearing system is mass coordinate system, which is also called, called NAT eighty-three. As I said, with number, note two, we had the botanist check the area for wetlands, and there was no wetlands on the site. I have a letter in my file to that effect. All the lots have suitable public access and good access for where the driveways are, are going to be going. There are no grades over fifteen percent for accessing the property. These are all suitable access in there for driveways and that type of thing. There's no, no flood zone areas. There's no known easements. I didn't find anything in channel title and the attorney didn't for the buyer, no known rights of way or easements on the locus at this current point in time. There's no known prior zoning board of appeals, planning board, or selectman decisions affecting the property. And again, the existing house is serviced by Town Water. And the final note, and it's, it's in the zoning district information that the water supply overlay protection district in the note up here is that the entire site is in that district. So I think with that, if there's any other questions, I assume everybody knows where this is on Main Street, and we're just north of the Georgetown line on Main Street. There's one piece of property that you're familiar with in this area here that's had a plan come before the board. So I can answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you. Let me turn to our Vice Chair. Peter, do you have any questions?
I don't at this time. Thanks.
Okay, George, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Leslie, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
And Woody, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Mary, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Martha, is there anything you'd like to add?
Just a couple of questions. In, in driving by the site, Kristen and I both noted that there are some, some slopes in front of, of the existing house now. But you've said that, so those are less than fifteen percent?
I, yes, they are. I actually have done a topo of the piece of property. So the existing house, where I have the driveway on lot one, that's the area of least slope over in there. I'm, I'm looking at my AutoCAD plan, which is not as easy to share as, as a TIF or in a PDF. But again, on, in, in front of the existing house, the driveway is in there. That's an existing driveway. That driveway is a little bit steep. I wouldn't design a driveway that way. I would have it come moreover towards the southerly lot line and then swing back in, but that house has been there for years and I mean, there's no, no problem going up the driveway, so that's where it is. And the slope actually is a little bit less as you go towards the southerly lot line of that lot.
Right, we did note that. So then the location of the new driveways being on the curve like that, did you observe any, any potential slight sightline issues?
On lot four, no. On lot three, let me just look at the slope. The slope on lot three is not bad at all. It's where I have the driveway coming in. It's probably only a five percent slope, maybe six percent slope, but it is on the curve and there's nothing I can do about that, you know? If I want to move the lot line down, the slope stays consistent or less going down, so the builder may decide to take and put the driveway closer to lot four. I just try to keep the driveways away from each other.
Right. Okay, thank you. And I guess the only other question would be clarification of the, the wraparound in the back. So could you point out again where the likely septic systems are going to be and why, why the lines couldn't couldn't go straight back instead of wrapping around each other?
The septic system for lot four, primary is about where my hand is now, and the reserve is about in here. For lot three, the primary, I'm going back and forth to my AutoCAD plan. The primary system is about here and the reserve area is here.
And if I could, Larry, so what is the, the grade? Could you give it, can you throw your topo up there just so we can see what it actually looks like? Are we talking, you know, thirty feet? Are we talking ten feet? Just so we, because it'll help us, I think, appreciate this three dimensionally rather than just what we're seeing.
You know, I don't know if my AutoCAD plan will share or not, so.
It might help appreciate the driveway business, too.
I think you'll probably have to stop sharing this one first before you put the other one up, if you're even able to do that.
It's not showing. Let me try this. Okay, so you can see this?
Yes.
So the primary system for lot three is here and the reserve is here. These boxes are probably oversized. They're twenty-foot by forty-foot boxes. And that's just designing lot lines to go around the soil testing and to keep ten feet away from lot lines and that type of thing. So that's how I designed the lot to go around the soil testing. And you can see this yellow line here is press escape. This yellow line that's right here is that area that's over fifteen percent. And again, not all of it is like this area up in here is certainly less than fifteen percent. But I'm not doing anything over there. And with the soil testing here, I have to put something else with the primary system. My only place to do that is here, so I had to bring this lot, the subtle lot lines around, so it, it attaches to that. And then for lot four, I have to come around here. The soils are limited between the soils themselves aren't bad, but they're limited not by the slope, but by the depth of material that would be ledger, that type of thing. And so you can see this was probably right in along this area of contour lines because it continues and downs, down slope a little bit. That's where good soils were.
What is that number with, where we are right now for our contour line? Because I, unless you can make this larger, I can't make that out.
So right in here, it's a hundred and six. Let me move back out a little bit. And so it's a hundred and six there. It's ninety-eight right here where my crosshairs are now. And it's eighty-eight when you get down to here.
And where the house is, it's about what, eighty?
The house is in the eighty-two contour area.
And so can we just pull that so we can look at the, where the driveways are, just so we have an appreciation of what's going on there?
Okay, so going up to lot one, this is where Martha mentioned the steeper slopes on lot two, one and two are in this area. This is not steep at all, and then once you get up onto the lot, I mean, it's like a good number of lots. We're planning to probably put the house someplace in this area. I don't know yet whether it'll be a, a, a a gravity system or a pump system. I don't know what he's going to do with that. Again, as, as you go along here, you've got this area that's a little bit steeper than, but then as you get down towards the southerly lot line of the existing house lot, it's not bad. It's seventy there and it's seventy-six right here. So if I was designing this driveway as part of this, if it wasn't already there, I would probably bring the driveway in here and come over and loop moreover this way and then go up into the garage that way, just to cut across the slope a little bit. But again, I've taken my, I have a subcompact car and I, I go up and down this with no problem at all. And then as you come down on this is frontage on lot three, you can see it's, it's relatively flat right there. Which is why I put the driveway there, but I could have easily, just as easily put it over here. More putting the proposed driveway in there is just to say that it's an area that the driveway can, can handle it. And when you get down to lot four, I'm sorry, it, it's almost flat right here, too. This is eighty, I'm sorry. This is sixty-six and this is sixty-eight and seventy way back here, so it's, it's almost flat in that area.
My thought was lot, the driveway one, what does that transition look like?
For which one?
One, number one.
For lot one, once you get off the, the little bit of a slope at the beginning, where are my contours? So this is eighty seventy-eight, seventy-six, seventy-four right here. So that contour is going to be seventy-four, up to eighty. Even that's not that steep for distance. That's forty-five feet and it goes up six feet. So it's a, a little bit over ten percent, but you're going to take and cut the driveway in there to slope it so that the driveway by the time it's done will probably be about five percent or six percent.
You answered the question right there with a cut in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else, Peter?
That's it. Thanks very much, Larry.
Anyone else have any follow-up questions or comments?
Yes, Larry, George here. John, I was wondering if you've run into any stormwater drainage issues. I had several moving elevations up there. And they, within the confines of the lot, were they running off onto any other land?
Well, everything back here, water goes perpendicular to the contours. So everything that's up in here is heading that way. This little bit, a knoll, some of it is going to be heading down this direction. And as you get down to lot four, it's going to be heading down to this direction, which is probably why there's a down in this area, why there's a wetland over there, because that's where the contours naturally go. Yeah. We're not going to be doing much of anything to change those by putting a house in. If anything, we may flatten some of the area out around the house, which will just slow down water going towards that property. And in here, I'm, I'm assuming that he's probably going to end up putting the house right around in here. Well, that's flat, so we're not going to be doing any increases in water going off the lot for that. So I, I don't really see it changing much of anything in the way the water flows.
You're well, thank you.
And I presume, I, John, that, that you're, you're keeping the existing house, right? You know, taking it down.
He originally had thought about taking it down, but he didn't even go inside the house until after he was under agreement on the property. Once he went into the house, he said, I was going to take it down, John, but I'm not. It's, it's too nice a shape inside. It needs some work outside. And he said, it's too nice a shape inside. I'm not going to take it down. Now, who knows? It, it's a builder. They're always subject to changing their minds.
No, I, I know you're not bound to that. And I, I just a thought, I don't know if, if you've got, and again, once, once again, I'm not suggesting anything that would be, you'd be bound by, but if there is a line of sight issue for, was it lot three? I don't know. Would, would you ever think about a common driveway for lots three and four? Because that would require a special permit. Again, I'm not asking you to commit to anything. I'm ju- just an observation.
Well, if I ended up putting the driveway right in this area, then I have a hundred and fifteen foot to where this angle in the road starts. So for a single family house, I don't think he'd ever consider it. And I don't think there's really a need need for it here. What's the site plan? What your subdivision regulations, which I didn't even look at for site distance?
You know, I can't quote you. Martha, do you know?
Yeah, I'm afraid I can't either.
Well, now I know I can't, but normally it would be something like four cars coming this direction, there's no problem with site distance going the other way, but for this direction, two hundred feet is the norm. But I don't even remember what the speed limit is on this road, whether it's thirty or
It's twenty five.
So that even reduces the site requirement more, you may not have updated your regulations since they changed the speed limits in all these towns to twenty five.
Yeah, like I'm just thinking out loud. Okay. Anybody else have any questions, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please, Leslie.
Having lived in that area for about fifteen years, I know that it's usually only in the springtime, but there water does collect down in like a natural swale near the street, except for where the existing driveway is. How are you going to handle that? Usually happens in the springtime. Now, we don't have any snow this year, so we may not see it. But that is how it usually works. So it did remain wet for a considerable amount of time.
For
Right along, right along the main street. So
Our side of Main Street?
On the southern side.
And what and what part of
It's just because of the slope of the land and the water runoff, it would come down and it would just gather right down in like a natural culvert type of thing at the just before it hits the road. It never, I've never seen it spill over into the road. But it, there is a collection of water down there, usually in spring when the snow is melting.
I know it doesn't show up on the contours. Now, that doesn't mean that, for instance, this is, this is sixty eight right here, and this is seventy. So it doesn't mean that there couldn't be an area in here that was sixty nine, so that it would kind of create a little swell in there, which could catch some water, but I'm not seeing it by the contour, so I don't know what to say.
I'm just speaking through, you know, like historically, having been there for, you know, living on Webb Road, having passed that for about fourteen and fifteen years, water did gather in that right down there by the road. And like I said, it never really did pour over into the road. But it was always remained wet for a considerable amount of time. And I think you can actually see that it does, because the trees at the bottom of that piece, those air, those areas on three and four. They look like swamp, a lot of swamp trees there, you know, they kind of got drowned out versus the trees that are behind it.
Thank you, Leslie. Was there anything further?
No, that's all I have.
All right, any discussion beyond what we've had so far? If all appears to be in order, then would it be we have, we have sufficient frontage, we have sufficient lot size, so unless anyone has any objection, I'd ask for a motion in second to endorse the A and R plan. Do I have a motion?
So
All right, George, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Peter, any discussion on the motion?
No.
No, George, any discussion on the motion?
No.
Leslie, any discussion on the motion?
No.
Woody, any discussion on the motion?
None.
Mary, same question, any discussion on the motion?
No.
All right, then how do you vote, Peter?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes, but can I put an amendment on top of that? Could we do a sidewalk on that area just before? But I'll vote yes tonight, let me just leave it at that.
Okay. And Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So, Mary, anything you wanted to add?
No, I vote yes.
Martha, are we good with this?
Yeah, so we will range with you for signature on the on the Mylar and the Prince and the Form A. And and John, should we contact you or Mr. Cormier directly when the Mylar is ready to be picked up?
Why don't you contact him directly?
Okay. I'll do that and I'll CC you, just so you know.
Okay.
Okay, that's one of the downsides of Zoom meetings, we can't sign it at the at the meeting, so we'll get that done as soon as we can.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
We can take that down now. I don't know who's there we go. Okay, next order of business is one forty, our Main Street Utility Access Road, New Leaf Energy, request from Robert Rosine Waterstone Engineering for approval of proposed modification to road layout to provide a drivable surface for maintenance access to all utility poles at the point of interconnection at the transmission corridor to accommodate N grid requirements. So Rob, Rosine, I know you're here somewhere. Oh, go ahead, Rob, you have it.
Good evening, folks. I regret that I'm here to request a modification of the modification. Won't belabor that. If I could, if I could share my screen and show you the issue at hand. We have let's see, let's share. Yes, let's do this. Okay. So as you, as I'm sure you all recall, we have a, we have a, we, we we just had an approved special permit modification that was for a maintenance access road. That maintenance access road, we going through the process of submitting that to National Grid. This was a condition of national grids for the pipe funnel piece, and this piece came up. So I'll review with you quickly what it is and and how I'm hoping this will, this will be treated. So what I want to point out here is one of the conditions of approval in the January fifth approval is item seventeen here, and I'll just read it to you quickly if you don't mind. Says during construction, if the applicant desires to modify the approved design of the project as shown on the approved plans, the applicant shall be required to appear before the board to secure the board's approval for any substantial modifications. In the event of any such request, the board shall hold a public hearing to consider the request for the modification of the special permit. Slight modifications to the design or layout of the raise and our related infrastructure, which prior to construction or site work are determined by the board or it's designated to be minor, may be made to the project as field changes without the need for a modification of the special permit or a public hearing. Board reserves the right to allow such minor modifications without a public hearing. So my, my job here is to convince you that this is in fact a a slight modification that would not require board approval, or excuse me, would not require a public hearing. So in my opinion, this is a slight modification for the following reasons, there is no additional impact. There is no increase in impervious surface. There are no changes to resource areas. The area is already part of the approved utility quarter. The area is already cleared. And the area is already approved for maintenance and routine clearing for vegetation. It simply lacks the stone surface to make it drivable. So then you would logically ask, why am I doing this? Why didn't we do this last time? So I'm going to share with you what was approved and what the issue is here. So what you see here, this plan set is what was approved. The area in red is what we're requesting here. So we have everything up to this area in red. There are five additional poles that have to be installed. This is the eleven thirty, I think that's what it is, the eleven thirty, oh, sorry, eleven eighteen plan set. What was submitted in the original plan set that went under under the third party review. This was the eighth the August thirtieth plan set, simply had showed the, 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 the road extending to the, to the limit of the, of the poles. Because of one of the comments by the third party reviewer asking about questions about the grading and the need to change some of this. I made the decision, which turns out to be not have been a good decision to, to shorten the road. So just to go back up, this is, this is what was approved, we shortened the road, made some slight modifications here for the turnaround for the fire department, my belief at the time, which is incorrect, was that we only needed to be able to access this pole. And in fact, we need to be able to access all the poles. But you'll see that the red line here is the lease area, this is the area that regardless of whether or not we are sorry, here, regardless of whether or not this road is extended, this area is already part of the utility quarter, it's already scheduled for clear, sorry, it's already been cleared cleared, it's part of the routine maintenance area. So the issue is what, what was the third party review concerned about? The third party review was really concerned about, you know, the grade through here. But let's say, let's show you, let's show you here in the cross section, that's the easiest, no, let me go back here, sorry. This one. So what's been approved is everything to, for this arrow to the left, so this is the longitudinal profile. So we're approved essentially to the top of the hill. At that comment, we basically eliminated this section of road. But you can see from, from here, there is modification in there, but we really, you know, it did it doesn't change much for us. And what I mean by that is there's always an already an existing customer riser pole in here, so we can't change much grading in here, which was why I decided incorrectly to just shorten the road. And how you can tell that, I'm going to go back to the cross sections. So these were the cross sections that were submitted with the August thirtieth. This is the last approved cross section, so this is part of the approval. And you can see here's, here's the, here's the cut in the hillside, here's, here's that, how that road section will come. And then that riser pole would essentially be right here, right through the elevation thirty six mark. But you can see the area down where it was shortened, there's really very little modification. I don't know if it's clear to you folks, but maybe I'll just clear it up a little bit. This is this is existing. Right? So you can see there's very little change in this area. So my goal is tonight to capitalize on your desire to be done with this project. And, and hopefully you will agree that this is a slight, in fact, a slight modification and represents no substantial change, really just the addition of, of stone down in this, in this, in this, or there, there will be rough grading, so not, nothing major, because we're really fixed by this this last pole that's in here already, so it's already installed. And that's where the highest point is, everything down here is just minor grading, it would just be a machine pushing really leveling the ground out so that we can place stone in that area. And with that, I will, I will pause and answer any questions you might have.
So, so just to be clear, is this what you're proposing to add here, that the additional roadway and length in the gravel or stone, is that anyway inconsistent with the peer review engineers' comments?
I, I, I don't believe so, no.
Martha, can I turn to you first and get your thoughts?
I haven't discussed this with Joe, so I can't, you know, I can't say that it's, it's from his perspective that it's inconsistent. It doesn't seem to be substantial. Is there, Rob, is there any any impact on stormwater and where, which direction the stormwater would be going in?
No, no, it's the same as the others, it's all just gravel. And the and really, an uncompacted gravel, and you know, if there were options here, we would consider them, but there there literally are no options here. So and why I say that is you know, first of all, you know, N grid needs what they need, which is, which is just unfortunately the situation we find ourselves in. But this, for example, this is the wetland line here, right? So we have we, we can, and I'll change it to blue so you can see that. You know, the wetland line is right here. So we don't have, you know, we, we're already, you know, as close as we can, we haven't changed anything, we're already, this area is already cleared. And we don't, we cannot alter the grading in here because of this existing pole. So and they're really beyond this section right here, there's no need to alter the grading. So if I go back to that cross section, just so you can see that one more time. This is already approved, this is where the grading concern might be. But that's, that's, that's really the case. In the area that we're proposing, there's very, very minor changes to grading. So I really think this this, this area just needs to be accessible for the bucket trucks and they've already, that's already accessible for them, because they can you know, they've already been able to put in that pole for example. That, that final pole, sorry, not the final, but the, the, the first pole in that run of six.
Martha, anything further?
I guess my only other question would be, is this something that you've discussed with with Sam from Conservation Commission point of view?
I have not.
Do you anticipate doing that?
No, because this doesn't affect no, I was not planning on that. But I suppose we could, but no, because there's no, no change to resources, everything's, I mean, there's no additional clearing. There's no additional impervious area. The area is already approved for use as the utility quarter. So no, I had not planned on that. Because I was just understanding this to be something that would require a special modification of the modified special permit.
Okay, thanks. I have no more questions.
All right, Pete, anything?
Thanks, Rob, it's good to see you, I guess. You know, it does appear that this is a of a housekeeping tidying up sort of thing between you and National Grid. And my thought is if if peer review is comfortable with it, that perhaps you know, this is something, and I don't see a change in anything with regards to conservation as discussed. If, you know, Joe is comfortable and we're comfortable with it, then maybe it'd be best for this to be handled administratively as minor.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. George, your thoughts?
All right, yes, I have a question on the thickness of the layer of stone, and apparently it's going to be above existing grade. So you're digging nothing down to hold the stone in place. Who's going to maintain that? Is it National Grid or the owner of the well, it would be National Grid, probably.
This actually would all be in the owner maintained at this point, even though National Grid does National Grid will own these five additional poles, but this is on the, in the owner in the owner maintained area.
Well, how thick is the layer of the stone?
I believe it's twelve inches. I can double check that, but I'm fairly sure it's just twelve inches. It's, so typically what we do is we, we would cut the eight inches of topsoil approximately, apply four inches, sorry, eight inches of essentially crushed, you know, six inch minus stone. And then, and then four inches Uh and then and then four inches of 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 finer material on top of that, which is, which is uh yeah, is is more of a drive up driving surface. And and that that is the same road surface uh that is in uh that that is, that's already in use out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Uh, thank you, George. Uh Leslie?
I have nothing.
Uh Woody, do you have anything?
No, the questions I had have already been asked. Thank you.
Okay, uh Mary, do you have any questions, comments?
I'm all set, Larry. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I I. Agree with Peter's comment. But maybe the best way to handle this is just simply as an administrative matter, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Martha, but basically. We need to decide one of three things tonight. One, if it's a major modification, one if it's a minor modification. Or one if it can simply be handled as a field change. Are you in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yeah, and and I I think if if we. Uh authorize um uh the planning director, give the planning director the authority to make a determination if this is an appropriate field change. If if you feel you need to reach out to Joe Sowetka at a conservation, uh you'd be free to do that, Martha. Does that make sense?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. Um so would would you like a motion?
Uh I think that would be good. Yes, please.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to uh. Treat this as um to authorize the uh planning director uh to treat this as a field change. Is that, is that sufficiently clear, Martha?
I think that's enough.
Okay, I don't want to over overdo it. Uh would anyone care to make that motion?
So moved.
I'm sorry to hear who that was. That uh.
Peter.
Uh we have a motion, as long as you get it, Martha. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Thank you, George. Um any discussion on the motion? Uh hearing on Peter, how do you uh vote on the motion?
Yes.
And George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Uh Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right, Rob. It's always a pleasure. Hope we don't see you again.
Yeah. Thank you, folks, very much. Yes, it is always a pleasure. You guys have a great evening.
Okay, I'm sure you don't want to come back and see us either, so.
Next project, please. You you take care, everybody. Thank you so much. Bye bye.
All right, um next item, one oh five High Road OSRD Seagate. Request from Mark DePiero for approval of proposed building footprint in uh grading changes in exclusive use area five. Uh with the extension of the porch are uh to wrap around the southeast corner. And exclusive use area seven installation of pipe to replace swale. As shown on uh in OSRD grading drainage plan sheet. CI, uh C one point two two prepared by DCI, re- uh revision number eight dated two two twenty three. And um. So that's um. Uh Steve Sawyer, are you here?
Yes, I am.
I assume he'll be. Yeah, filling us in on this.
Okay, um yeah, so um things are moving, progressing along um quite rapidly now. Um I believe this, it's um seven of the nine new homes are are going up. And things are coming together. As we grading out, actually, uh okay to share a screen, Martha?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh everyone, can we see it?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Um unit seven. We're we're running up against one thing. Um as you notice, we have a nice, you know, these other units. We have a nice flat area in the back of the buildings, flat area, flat area. Um flat. And one thing that we just were coming to realize as we're grading out, getting through the rough grading is is a fairly abrupt. Slope right here in this backyard. We're trying to. Figure out how to flatten it out a bit to get this this unit seven a nice flat, a flat area in the backyard. And so what Mark was thinking, he was looking at, okay, could we um fill in the swell at this point and just pipe it in between? I think Joe had, he had commented the fact that we might, that there there'd be uh cover issues on the pipe right now as, you know, with this plan, well, as I have it laid out. There's ways to, you know, it might have been a little premature on getting a plan together. Um I think in talking with, he was on the site with Mark today, we were looking at it. And I think as we, he gets fine grading and starts working the um the grading around here, uh I think we can revise this. Revise how we're going to handle it, whether it's piped. Uh one way to, one way to pipe it is. You'd put a a small structure and and drop it in to drop the pipe underneath, so the pipe would be deeper. Um one thing that doesn't show up on the contours on the existing conditions plan here. Is there's a substantial bank, there's a very abrupt bank that runs along here that that keeps the water on the property. Um I think it's from years of, I think we had mentioned it during permitting. But it was quite, uh it was quite overgrown in this area. Uh and such, and as we cleaned out, you know, clean the the thicket out to the property line. Um you can actually see the the bank quite quite readily. And I think it's from years of 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 um farming, uh farming this this site and. And plowing the soil. Um so there is. An abrupt bank to keep the water on our property. Anything running down slope isn't, isn't going to make it onto the Colby property. But I think what I'd like to ask is probably what would make sense as we get closer, as we get the grading gets closer, is to have a site visit. I'd like to get Joe out there and just throw some ideas with him. To make sure he's on board. Um he's on board with what the direction we're going on an engineering wise. Uh and and you know, engineering aspects before we uh we move forward with uh how we're handling that. Um and then the other change was simply on unit five, we're wrapping the porch around this end. Just around the corner, so they have a a porch around that that end of the house. And um those are the two. I think probably at this point, we'd just be looking for approval of five. And then I'd be looking either for uh either as similar before, an administrative review of our handling the drainage uh with. With Joe or um. Come back in to to make that change. Present that change, but I think what I'd like to ask is have some coordination with Joe. Prior to um putting the, as I put the plan together.
Okay. Do you an anticipate um doing this with any of the other exclusive use areas?
I don't, um I don't think so. If you look. I'm hoping, you know, if if you notice, we have, you look here, a good slope, I mean, good, good level area. Level area, level area, I was kind of looking at, you were working on the level area there, nice level area there. Um level area here. So I think we're in pretty good shape. With all the other ones. It's just this one seems to be, there is, there is pressure, pressure with the grade on that one. I think up here, you notice there's level area, level area, level area. So um I don't mind. I think Mark might be on, he can chime in if he thinks there's any other lots that he's, he foresees any issues with.
Uh no, I don't think so at this point. Those are the only real tight ones.
Yeah.
That we have.
Okay, thank you. Martha, anything you'd like to add?
No. No.
Uh Pete, do you have any uh any questions, comments, concerns?
Can you pop your screen back up, Steve?
Yeah, sure.
So if I understand correctly, um you'd be, you're talking about piping behind lots, unit seven.
Yeah.
Running pretty close to where that, actually, where your curse just was right with that tree, uh so you can have a. Maybe some tree mitigation you might have to do there then, right?
Well, right, we were cutting there to get the swell, this we were, that we were carving out to get the swell there anyway. So there was earthwork proposed at that area anyway.
Okay, and so then the next tree down the, down the road might, something might have to happen with that if you're going to have a pipe right there, right?
Oh, well, it'd be up up here. Yeah, this one.
Yeah.
Originally, so originally, we were, you know, the the thing is originally we're carving out, carving a swell out, which requires earthwork. Um you know, the. A a pipe might require less, less disturbance, getting a twelve inch pipe and require less disturbance than a. You know, a fo- five, six foot wide swell. To be honest.
So are you asking us to have you go take a look at this with Joe and then come back to us for discussion on this? Is that what?
Or it was two ways. So either. Similar to before that, okay, that it could be administrative change, and if the peer reviewer agrees engineering wise. That we're, you know, the intent of that swale is to convey the water down along that property line. And if he's comfortable. With how it's revised in an engineering aspect, that it meets the intent of that swell. And doesn't raise any issues. Then um I think that, you know, I would hope that the board would, that they'd take his direction. Um so either an administrative change that would be administered with Martha and Joe. Would be the preferable uh option. And um I guess if if need be, we'd come back with with the revised design.
Okay, and then, and then we're, the reason we're asking for a wraparound porch?
I think the homeowner is looking, it was, I think, coordination with the uh with the buyer.
Okay, something to think about. Thanks for, those are my questions right now. Yeah.
Thank you, Peter. George?
I have no questions.
Uh Leslie, any questions?
Already been answered.
Okay, Woody?
No, I don't have any questions right now, Larry.
Uh and Mary, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Uh and Martha, how do you, how do you feel about Steve's suggestion about um treating these as administrator review matters?
Yes, my feeling is since. Since the other grading changes have been formally approved by the board. I think to be consistent with that precedent. Um I think it 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 might be better to have, you know, once, if, once Joe is is um. Satisfied that this will work, you know, get the plan revised accordingly and come back to the board.
Okay, so that would, uh are you talking about just unit seven or are you talking about both?
Uh just unit seven. I think, I think uh unit, unit five to me seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and I agree, I agree. And I note that uh that Joe has said as much in his letter. Um quoting the porch addition on unit five should not have an effect. When the engineering design of the project, in my professional opinion. So just focusing on the wraparound porch on unit five, is there any further discussion on that? Hearing on that, I entertain a motion to approve this as a minor modification for the wraparound porch on unit five.
I'll move.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leslie. I think I heard you first. Um any further discussion on this, Peter?
No.
George, any further discussion?
No.
Leslie, any further discussion?
No.
Woody, any further discussion?
No.
And uh Mary, any further discussion?
No, no, Larry.
All right, then Peter, how do you vote on the motion?
On unit five, I voted yes.
And George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Uh Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that is approved unanimously as a minor modification. And I guess we will um, Steve, we'll see you again on unit seven when you work things out with Joe.
That sounds like a good plan. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you all. Thank you both.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, next, we have uh sixty eight Crane Street subdivision Farmview Lane. Request from Michael DeSantis for release of lot three from the restrictive covenant. Okay, and uh who do we have here on that?
I'm present, Mike DeSantis.
Oh, Mike, okay. Why don't we, I know you, we've got several uh matters on, but why don't we um. Focus on the release of lot three for now. And we'll address the others in in order. So if you can just tell us where we're at.
Yeah, um so right now, we're looking for release of lot three from the restrictive covenant so that we can convey lot three where we had a, but we've had a buyer since the summer. We've. We're at the finish line with completing the build of the home. The road. Is built, has been built out and stormwater has all been built out, approved by Joe Sworka. Um and we're just, Millennium is finalizing as built um for the road and stormwater, but we're looking for release of lot three. From the restrictive covenant so that we can convey, uh we have a closing date set right now. It's March eighth that we're shooting for.
Uh one of the conditions of approval um of the approval was a, was approval of the homeowners association documents. I understand those are still uh. Um still under review, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, I, I can speak to that, Mr. Murphy. Uh it's it's my understanding, and Martha, you can correct me, but but I believe we do have those in in final form. And they'll be before the board next month for board approval. Is that correct, Martha?
Um I would say pretty much they've been reviewed by town council, but it was noted that there was was an issue regarding the ownership of the road that needs to be sorted out.
And we did, um I have been working with me, Talman. Two attorneys there, Ben and Beth, and I believe we have that matter resolved. We we actually have two different courses of action that we can take. Uh and hope to have that matter resolved within the week.
Okay, so you think that things will be ready for a final review um before the March first meeting?
Yes, yes, we do.
I mean, would it ma- make sense to put this over then and address both issues at the same time? Because you can't sell it without the HOA approval anyway.
I I think for uh Crane Properties and Mr. DeSantis. We have a a purchase that's trying to happen shortly after that March meeting. And then in fairness to the buyer and their counsel getting ready for the closing, the restrictive covenant Form D. Is on record at the Registry of Deeds. It would be a title matter. Uh I'm not so sure if after the March meeting. You'd have enough time to issue the release or not in time for them to close. Uh the, the restrictive covenant Form D does, does not reference the the road issue. So I do believe that if you look at the um. Eleven ten, sorry. Criteria set forth in the restrictive covenant that the board could release the restrictive covenant today. And still have ample protections from the subdivision plan approval, which is already recorded. And the subdivision plan approval is what actually calls for the HOA. So I I think for tonight, um the board could. Issue the release on the restrictive covenants and still may. Be plenty of protection through the subdivision plan approval that's already on record as well.
Um Martha, you have any thoughts?
So are you thinking that the lot would be conveyed before the HOA documents are finalized because you would need to reference those in the deed? The lot would need to be subject to the trust.
We would not be conveying without that approval. That 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 needs to be in place, and that's part of your subdivision plan approval that's on record. The HOA would certainly be.
You you want to get the release on record before the March meeting, is that?
The the release of the restrictive covenant. So there's two operative documents. Um there's a subdivision plan approval, which um. The developer. Got approved by this board, which has a a fair amount of criteria that Mr. DeSantis has followed, you know, step by step. The restrictive covenant is more of the guarantee that went on after the uh subdivision approval. Um and that, you've actually already released this lot from paragraph three of it. But it doesn't pertain to the HOA. The the other criteria in the Form D restrictive covenant do not pertain to the HOA. So. The the subdivision approval plan is always going to be on record at the Registry of Deeds, but for the buyer to purchase it, they're going to need to have a release of the restrictive covenants. And both of them do need to happen before.
Just wondering if they could be, you know, all recorded at the same time.
I don't think you're going to record an approval of the subdivision. Plan. I think you, you're going to record a certificate of occupancy. Which you wouldn't be able to do without the homeowners association.
Right, I don't, I don't have the covenant in front of me. I I thought there was some reference in the covenant to the HOA. Am I mistaken on that?
Maybe, Mr. Murphy, I think I can share that with you on the screen. It's paragraph three, but this board uh in March of two thousand twenty two. Released this lot from paragraph three.
No, I. Uh just bear with me here for a sec. Just bear with me here for a sec. Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I, I misremembered it. Let me turn to the board members. Pete, do you have any?
I, I, I'm feeling a little uncomfortable about doing something that isn't really kind of. Falling in place in line, and I know, I understand the desire to have this wrapped up by the eighth of March. But if this question that. What's going on with the road and what's going on with the documents, and you can't tell us tonight, or you don't have those answers for us tonight. I don't feel comfortable moving forward. That's, that's, that's me, that's where I'm at right now. Because right now, you're directing the board and you're representing your, your client, of course. And all that I would do is I would just turn to town council and say, hey, what's what here? And that's what I would do, because, you know, I'm not an attorney.
All right, thanks, Pete. George, you have any, any thoughts?
Yeah, likewise, I'm very uncomfortable saying let's record a deed without having the HOA in place. So obligations on that and some benefits built in within the HOA documents, which have to be considered. And that's not able to be done by anybody's attorney going and say. I think we're all set anyway, particularly if there's a bank mortgage involved. The bank is just not going to go ahead with it.
Thank you, George. Leslie, your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm in total agreement with Pete and George. I'd like to see all the ducks in a row before we move forward.
Yeah, Woody?
Yeah, I agree as well with George and Pete.
And Mary?
Yeah, I agree as well.
Well, yeah, I, I, I think that it's prudent that, to do as suggested. I know you, it's not what you wanted to hear tonight, but I think if we can get the HOA documents together, resolve your issues with the. With the roadway access, and we can probably wrap this up at our first meeting in March. So I, I, I don't imagine that's going to hold you up any.
Thank you. If, if it pleases the board, we, we would withdraw that request, so you don't have to put it to a vote tonight.
Okay, thank you.
And then we perhaps can move on to the next item, which I think will be a little bit more streamlined for the board.
Yeah, yeah, as far as, as far as this goes, Martha, if you can just get it on, you know, whenever you're comfortable that, that everything's. We've got all our ducks in a row here. Hopefully, the first meeting in March.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next item is request from Michael DeSantis. For a release of lot two from the provisions of paragraph three of the restrictive covenant pertaining to placement of a permanent structure on the. On that lot, on the lot, excuse me. So I don't know who wants to speak to this mic or bill.
I, I think I can tee this up for you. This is essentially the exact same matter that was before you in March of two thousand twenty-two. With lot number three. Where there was a little conflict between the subdivision approval plan and the restrictive covenant. This board voted to release lot three from paragraph three of the restrictive covenant. So that Crane Properties could start building on the property. We had the exact same discussion with you again in August with lot number one. So we're a little bit out of order, so we did number three, and we did lot number one. In August, we had the same discussion, ran through with the board. The board voted to release lot one from the restrictive covenant, specifically paragraph number three, to allow Crane Properties to start building. We are here before you tonight with the exact same request, but for lot number two. Which again would allow Crane Properties to start building on the property. But as you can see from the previous discussion on lot three. There would, there would be no sale of the property or no transfer of the real estate or any certificate of occupancy is issued. Until there, until we have final approvals and compliance with the subdivision approval. So I, I think that this is a matter that's been before the board, and. If, if we need to refresh memories a little bit more, I'm happy to discuss it. But, but I do think that this could be dealt with relatively quickly, given that we've already been down this path twice. On lots number three and lots number one.
If I may just clarify, it's not complete release from paragraph three, which also refers to conveyance. It's only released from those provisions regarding placement of a permanent structure on the lot.
Basically allows you to get a building permit.
Right, so the language of the motion will just need to be clear.
Right. All right, let me talk. Turn to the board members again. Pete, any thoughts?
Not, not on this, thanks.
George?
No comments.
No, Leslie?
Nothing.
Woody, any comments?
Same, no comments.
Mary, any, any comments? No, I agree, it's pretty straightforward, as you said, we've been down this road before. So how would, I'm just trying to think how to, how to phrase the motion. Martha, you had some nice language there. How was it again?
Well, I think it was basically, previously it would have been a motion to release. So in this case, it would be release lot two from those provisions of. Paragraph three of the restrictive covenant regarding placement of a permanent structure on the building. In order to allow the, the owner to.
And would anyone care to make that motion?
I'd be happy to.
All right, thank you, Peter. Is there a second? Second, I think, or George first, thank you. Any discussion? All right, the roll call vote. Peter, how do you vote? Yeah, George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that's unanimous. And our last item for Crane Street is. The. Review of landscaping plans. So Mike, are you going to do that, or?
I can pull up the plans. I can share the screen here. So to refresh the board's memory, when we were on, I think it was in August, we'd, it was brought up that there was a row of abramides that. Went along this side of the road up here, if everybody can see my mouse. That was essentially put there when the subdivision was being approved, because there's a barn on the other side of here. And it was to create privacy, but as soon as we took over ownership of the land, this barn owner put. You know, fence that essentially goes from here all the way down and created that privacy for us already. I can't remember which member of the board brought it up, but essentially that, you know, that row of abramides was now. Kind of not necessary to create that kind of wall or barrier. To create privacy, so that, you know, we could come to the board with another kind of more desirable and. Cosmetically pleasing approach to trees and, and the landscaping of the road. So we worked with Colin, also met with Martha. Out on the site to review some options, presented a few tree options and went back and forth a few times on. Placement of the entry garden, the mailboxes on Green Street, and then the type of. Trees that we were going to plant along the road, and, and this is kind of where we've ended up, and wanted to present to the board to get your all's opinion. Also, another thing to note is just, you know, each, so the, the road is gravel, each driveway will be peystone. And the entry to each driveway will be kind of a nice cobblestone apron. To keep the separation from the peystone and the gravel from the road. We're also going to line the, the circle with some large boulders, is kind of security boulders for. Guests, you know, parking in the, in the roadway when visiting any of the lot owners, so that's all. Shown here on the plan as well. You know, and speaking with Martha. On site too, there's some rock walls that. Were on the abutting properties that had to be on our property taken down to build the construction entrance and construct the road. So we're going to continue those boulder walls now onto our property to just kind of make it look like it was more. Integrated into the, the surrounding area, so you can see that referenced here. And we're also going to put a nice entry garden, which I have a more blown up view of here. With a good deal of native plants here, and we've also, because this falls within the, the hundred foot buffer of the wetlands across the street. Have presented this to Sam and, and Conservation and gotten her approval. On the plantings that we're using here and, and placement of the garden. And then here you'll see where we're going to put the mailboxes for all three homes. And placement of this has been approved by the hostmaster. And that's. About all of it. Unless I'm missing anything, Martha.
Uh, no, I think you covered it.
Yeah.
Okay, Martha, anything you'd like to add?
Uh, just a, a couple of notes, as Mike said, we did have some discussion about the. The proposed street trees to make sure that they're, they're actually native, non-invasive species. So the dog, white dogwood is, is the, the final proposal here. I did contact James to see if he had any concern about the placement of the entry garden, since that's in. In the Green Street right of way, and his concern was just making it, making sure that it was at least five feet back, so it doesn't get. Caught by the, the, the wing plows, if they, if there's a lot of snow and they need to shelve the snowbanks along the side of the road. And talked with Sam this afternoon, since it is in the, the buffer zone of the wetland across the street. And as Mike noted, she has, has approved it and sent a, a letter, which I got relatively late in the afternoon. That I, I'll send to the board for your information. I can pull that up if you'd like me to read, read what her comments were.
Sure, why don't you do that?
I have that, you want me to pull it up, Martha? I could have pulled it up.
Okay, all right, yeah, if you can do that, that'd be great.
Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Do you like me to read this, Martha, or?
Oh, I can read, I can read it. I'm sorry, I thought it was, it's probably smaller on the screen. I can read it. To who it may concern, the Newberry Conservation Agent recently reviewed a proposal. For the installation of an entry garden at the intersection of Green Street and the entrance of Farmview Lane Development. The entry garden is proposed to be located within the hundred foot buffer zone to bordering vegetated wetland. At approximately seventy-five feet from the mapped edge of wetland. Following review of the proposal and clarification on the scope of the project, the agent has determined that there is no need. For conservation permitting process, subject to the following conditions. All plants proposed for use in the entry garden shall be native plants. There shall be no use of turf materials. Any materials brought on site, loam and other soil mixes, plants, et cetera. Shall be clean and debris free. All effort to prevent introduction of invasive species, including plants and insects, shall be taken. The approved area of planting alteration is approximately a hundred and sixty square feet, roughly sixteen feet by ten feet. There shall be no excavation beyond six inches below existing grade to accommodate the installation of the entry garden within the proposed area. The entry garden and surrounding area shall be approximately stabilized following installation. To minimize runoff and erosion, disturbance of the surrounding area shall be minimized as much as possible during installation. And shall be restored following completed installation. Any changes proposed plan for the installation of this entry garden area shall be subject to the review of the conservation agent prior to the commencement. And may be subject to review by the Conservation Commission at the discretion of the agent during a regularly scheduled public meeting. That was your contact info.
Good, thank you. Pete, do you have anything?
Sure, no, Mike, could you go back to your plan for a sec? Great, so appreciate you working with us on this. So I have a question. On, on lot one, is that how that house configuration finally ended up?
No, it's, it actually, the driveway comes up on the right side and, and is closer to the lot line.
Right, 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 so.
I could bring up that landscape plan if you'd like to look at it.
Sure.
This is by no means final, but it's kind of where we're at. We'll just give you an idea of how. How the road, how the driveway comes off the road.
Is there any way to create any sort of a buffer between your, your new home and the home that's existing, the abutment home? Because I kind of took a look at that, it looked.
Yes, we, we've met with them.
Okay.
And we're going to be out there with them and our landscaper to just go over, you know, even anything they would like us to plant on their side.
Okay.
On the prop, of, on their property. Just because obviously they're not thrilled that, you know, they, they had a great view and they're not thrilled that there's a home there now, but, you know, I told them that's. You know, that was before my time that this got approved, but we're here to, to make everybody as happy as we can, so.
Beautiful.
And that's why I said like, this is by no means final, like this is kind of a steep grade here, so we might even end up doing some. Kind of rock or granite steps or something, and then obviously plant along this property line.
Right, if you could just keep Martha in the loop with what that final resolution is, just so we're aware of that.
Yeah, for sure.
That'd be great. And if you go, go back to the previous.
Yep.
And so, there's going to be, you, you're going to have that steep rock ledge along, you know, where that fence is. Do you think those guys are going to be able to take there? Those dog? Yeah.
Take what, say again, that, that tree?
Yeah, so you have a steep ledge and you're basically the swell right there.
Yeah, so this, I mean, this might not be the exact placement of that tree. I think they're going to obviously find an area where. There, there's enough soil there that there's not ledge and that the tree won't die. I mean, it's there. You know, they will be maintaining the road as well for the HOA, so I think it's, it's to their benefit that. They put it somewhere where it's going to be successful for the tree.
Right, that's why I was asking, because that is pretty ledgy there.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that's going to be the trickiest of all of them, honestly, and that's, you know, we'll, we'll obviously submit. Once we know exactly where it's, where it has been placed, but.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Anything else, Peter?
No, that's it. Thank you, Larry.
George?
No comments.
Leslie?
Not, no.
Woody?
No, I have no comments, thank you.
Mary?
No, thanks, sorry, nothing.
Actually, I have a question for Martha. Martha, this looks like it's, it's some, something of a work in progress. Is there any reason this just couldn't be handled at the administrative level?
If the board is comfortable with that, I think that could be done.
That's a great idea.
Okay, anyone have any thoughts on that? I'm sorry, George, I couldn't hear you.
I, I favor that way of handling it.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, I'm sure this is going to, like I said, it's something of a work in progress. So Martha, assuming that, that the board is in agreement with that. How, would you want to motion to handle this as an administrative matter?
Uh, I think that would be good for the record, yes.
Okay, would anyone care to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Leslie. Is there a second? Thank you, Woody. Any discussion? Hearing none, then Peter, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that's unanimous, so. Good, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. I did have to jump off my screen, but I finished up on the phone.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks again.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to the agenda. Old business, we have none about the planning director's report.
Um, I've got a few things here. So I did receive an update from Kevin Whitney regarding the progress at eighty-four Boston Road. So I don't know if anybody's been by the side, especially when, when you've all gone to the transfer station, but they do have a foundation in. So site grading and ledge removal is ongoing, but the site has been, you know, is fairly level at this point. The building foundation has been poured. They're anticipating that the, the steel building will be scheduled for delivery on. February twenty-seventh, building erection will start a day or two after that, and they're expecting completion April first. Drainage work will begin around February twenty-third and will be ongoing, and water well drilling is scheduled for March first to March fifteenth. So that's where they are right now. So I was going to reach out to Kevin to see if he can give us an update on. Anticipated completion, because originally they, they were anticipating it would be this spring.
So, so Martha, that foundation is a half wall foundation, right?
Uh, yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty high.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's almost three foot, so the doorway is a part of it.
Yep, so. We'll see how that goes. We'll see how that goes. Let's say Newbury Port, three Newbury Port Turnpike, I had mentioned previously that, um, they had run into some issue with, um, the soils in the, um. Infiltration basin, uh, TJ Melvin has been putting together. Um, a revised plan, um, which I'm expecting for the March first agenda. Let's see, I was going to provide an update on the HOA documents for sixty-eight Green Street, but we already talked about those. Uh, the one oh five High Road Conservation Restriction, um, is in progress. Uh, there's been a preliminary review on, actually Kristen and I and town council have all. Reviewed, and I have comments to go back to, um. Uh, Matt Gaines, Mark's attorney on this. Uh, and I just wanted to remind everybody that next Tuesday at eleven AM, we've got the site walk at one seventy Orchard Street. Um, and I have received, uh, Joe's first round of peer review comments on that, and I'll send those to the board tomorrow and get those up on the website. So that's all I, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Martha. Um, so for liaison reports, uh, Leslie, select board?
Select board met last night. They went over some general business, business licenses, one day liquor licenses. Um, we did, um. There has been, um. Two appointments in the, uh, police department. Sir, uh, Stephen Jenkins has been. Uh, promoted to detective sergeant. And Stephen Smith has been re, uh, promoted to sergeant. Um. The COA fourteen passenger van will be ready in nine months. And the majority of the meetings was, um, conducted by Bob Connors, who's the chair of the Municipal Building. Committee to give an update on, um, how they're coming along with the town hall. Uh, plans and the information. Um, it was a very good presentation. Uh, Martha, are there any more of the, um, handouts left, you know?
I don't know. You have to check, check with Julie on those, I think.
But there were some handouts so that, uh, if there are any, I would say that would be a good thing if anybody wanted to go down and get one to review it. Um, it was. Not lengthy, but it's quite detailed, and then there'll be a follow-up, um. On March seventh at the town, at the library to, um. Is a joint meeting. To, uh, go over. Uh, and. Prepare the information for, um, town meeting. Other than that, that was the majority of the meeting last night.
No. Okay, thank you, Leslie. Uh, ZBA, their regular monthly meeting is tomorrow night, and they have two continued public hearings from their last meeting, uh, one for, uh. Eighty Northern Boulevard, which was a special permit finding. Uh, to renovate an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling with an increase in height. And apparently they're, according to the agenda, there has been, um. Uh, request to continue that until the March meeting, and also a continued public hearing on sixteen Green Street. Uh, which is a, a special permit for detached accessory, uh, apartment. And that's all that's on for tomorrow night, so that's all I have. Conservation.
Uh, conservation, let's see, uh, of interest is governors, I did a preliminary, uh, uh. Introduction of a walkway that they're, what, kind of want to be doing to the new science center to keep that off the road, so that'll be coming to us. Uh, more people are putting generators out on the island, and that's coming for conservation, so. That's what we have. Thanks.
Thank you, Pete. And, uh, I'm sorry, did someone say something? Uh, Martha, MVPC, anything?
Um, actually, if I can go back to my planner's. Uh, report, um, for a second. Um, we also, we had a meeting with, um. Tom Woodruff and, uh, Wendy Reed from Governors also to, to look at this walkway, and that will be coming before the board as a, as a. Uh, as a site plan review, probably level one site plan review. Um. And the other thing that, uh, is going to be coming to us is probably an informal discussion, um. About the, um, possibility of erecting a tent at the Sunset Club down on Plum Island. So, um.
Are you anticipating that for the, uh, March meeting first?
Um, I received a, a call from, um, Bo Sturm today, but I wasn't able to reply to it. I think they want to move forward because of the time. With the tent, so I think his request will be to put it on for the March. Agenda if possible, but we do have a fair amount of business to discuss that night. So we may, may want to take a look at that.
Okay.
Alright, so I forgot those things. Um, MVPC, the commissioner's meeting is going to be held tomorrow. Main topic of conversation will actually be the budget. Um, they. Always partway through the fiscal year, they do an updated budget for the current fiscal year, and then also a projected budget for the. Next fiscal year, so be discussing budgets for FY twenty-three. Uh, budget number two and FY twenty-four, budget number one. And they will be setting the town's, uh, assessments. I don't know what they're recommending, um, at this point. Generally, it's been in line with. Uh, proposition two and a half, so two and a half percent increase. Which at that is still a great bargain for all the service that they provide to us.
Good. Uh, anything else, Martha?
Uh, no, that's it, thanks.
Uh, we have on the agenda four meeting minutes. I note that, um. We received two of those this afternoon. Uh, January fourth and, uh, I think it was February first, yeah, February month. I don't know if anyone has had an opportunity to review those, prepared to go forward. I'll say, I have not had enough. Yeah. I'm seeing a lot of shaking heads, so, uh. No, okay, uh, so maybe we can just put those up for the next meeting, Martha.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, well, is there anything else?
I just wanted to say, Kristen, thank you. For doing what she did.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so, um, unless. What's that?
You froze for a minute.
Oh, okay, am I back?
You were back.
Okay. What I said is I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, I think that was Leslie. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, Peter, how do you vote?
Yes, thank you.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, I assume you're in agreement?
I am.
I vote yes as well. So we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Always, it's a pleasure.